All right, this time I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and invite our Commissioner Donarosa to lead us in an indication.
Heavenly Father, I thank you for all the greatest greatness. I ask you to guide our city leaders and decisions that will benefit our city of Harlingen and every citizen attending today's meeting. We ask you to protect our city, our police officers, firefighters, employees, and anyone with interest in Harlingen. Keep us all out of harm's way. I ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, and if we have some items more to record, we'll remember recognition, we have. We've all recognized Daniel Martinez. Thank you for this certificate. Well, thank you for agreeing to serve on this, our planning and zoning commission, very important, one of our awards, and also important to the fans of our community, so I'd like to bring you that. May I make your picture?
Y'all may need to get more strategically located in front of the H.
Is that planning?
Yes.
That's good.
So we need to tape on the wall.
All right, thank you, congratulations, agreeing to serve. And then we have Jerry Wayne Lowry. But Mike, or he's not.
Yeah, but he's not in town.
We'll do him later. And Eric Ziege, he's not here, and Lorenzo, he's not, he's not. Anybody else? Okay. Item two is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of May 14, 2018, and the regular meeting of May 16, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes?
Mayor, I'd like to make a correction. I had appointed Delorean Davis to the CBD Board, but meant to appoint her to the Harlingen Museum Board.
Okay. So, any other additions or corrections? All right, then with that correction, is there a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
Second.
All those mayors say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consent agenda is items three A through F. Is there a motion to adopt consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item four, consideration possible action approved in ordinance on first reading amending Chapter 18 of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, amending fees for the library, planning and zoning, parks, municipal torium, Casa de Amazonas, Harlingen, Parks and Heritage Museum, public buildings, and Tony Bellar cough course.
Mayor, members of the commission, at the last City Commission meeting, we discussed the fees for the various departments that staff had planned to change or add or for the various departments. I'm not going to go into the specifics about the fees, but if you have any questions, department directors for the respective departments are here to answer any questions you may have. And there were no objections raised by the commission on the fees that we presented.
Are there any correction, or questions, rather? All right, if we can add the City Attorney read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 18 master fee schedule, establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and other services provided by the city of Harlingen. Amending Chapter 2, administration. Amending Chapter 26, libraries, arts, and cultural affairs. Amending Chapter 36, parks and recreation. Amending Chapter 1003, building and billing regulations. Amending Chapter 111, zoning, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances as to fees, providing a severability clause, providing a penalty clause, providing a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Still moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consideration of possible action on approving a resolution approving cooperation with the cities served by AEP to review AEP Texas Inc.'s request of approval or adjustment to the energy efficient cost recovery factor, hiring legal and consulting services to negotiate with the company and to direct any necessary litigation and appeals.
Mayor, members of the commission, on June 1, 2018, AEP Texas filed Energy Efficiency Cost Recovery Factor with a PUC to increase the rates. This resolution will allow us to hire Lloyd Ossling and their consultants to review the rates that are proposed by AEP. Any fees that are incurred by Lloyd Ossling and the consultants will be reversed by AEP. We've done this in the past. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
So this is one of those wash, rinse, and repeats?
Yes, pretty much.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Still moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, consideration of possible action due to authorize the mayor to execute an easement and right-of-way to AEP Texas Central Company and Texas Corporation for the installation of electrical service in the Harlingen Correction Center.
Mayor, commissioners, good afternoon. This item, as you mentioned, is to serve the electrical connections for the building itself. AEP is requesting the easement so that they can secure the installation of the transformer, the meter, and those type of apparatuses. This is something that was anticipated, we just needed to have the location, and now that we've identified the location, we made it move over.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the execution of the easement?
Still moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve by a resolution, the acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration FAA Anticipated Grant Offer Number 3-48-0101-060-2018 of $1,425,000 for projects in the airport terminal building at Valley National Airport. One, replace the terminal lobby flooring. Two, replace the pad coil units throughout the airport. Three, miscellaneous lighting upgrades. Mark, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. This is our typical FAA grant that we receive on an annual basis. It's entitlement funds that come to the airport and in the form of 90-10 grant, 90% to FAA Airport Improvement Program, 10% local match. That local match will be covered by passenger facility charges, and we have three projects, as you can see up there. The terminal floor, all of the flooring that's down now, the old tile, is past its useful life, having problems with a crack and can't make it anymore, and it will be replaced with a smooth epoxy terrazzo. And the HVAC heating and cooling boxes that are actually in the ceiling and offices, those will be replaced as part of our upgrade of all of the HVAC system throughout the terminal building. And then we have lighting upgrades, including the ramp lighting out on the ramp where the aircraft are, as well as lighting poles and LED lighting in the parking lot area that would complete that project and also save us money.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mark? We'd like to getting money back from the FAA, so is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Still moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. So we keep making Valley International Airport the best airport?
Definitely the premier airport.
All right, thank you. Item eight, consideration of possible action to authorize the city manager to accept the Texas Division of Emergency Management, TDM, subgrant for the Harlingen mitigation grant program under a board application number 5266-014, and provide 20% funding match for the 9th and 13th Street drainage improvement project.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. To DEM, not a fight, City of Harlingen, I have an award for Phase One, which includes engineering, plan specifications, estimate, show technical report, hydrology, hydraulics, and DCA, which is the benefit cost analysis for the project. FEMA was, need more information for us to get the construction funding for this project, so they went ahead and broke into phases. Phase one is through the studies and the plans, and phase two is to, for construction, if Phase One finds some findings of acceptance for the DCA. It's a 75-25 match, so there's a typo on the caption, not 20%, it's 25%, which the federal money is 92963 for 75%, and the city is 30,084. Establish, recommend, approve.
So we submitted this grant application for the entire amount for the project, for the drainage improvement. TDM came back and said, we need additional information in order to process the grant, but we're willing to give you a phased project. Phase one would be the dollar amount needed to get the information, to do the engineering, to get the information that's needed, to get their justification that they need in order to fund the improvement. So, we thought that was fantastic, and it's a great opportunity for us, so we are definitely recommending approval for Phase One.
So you could send them photographs of today's street activity?
They asked for a little more information than that, but yes.
Can you describe the area that this drainage will drain?
Sure, the system is 005 in the master drainage plan, and it covers 9th Street through 13th Street from Hedren Tyler to Pierce. Crews have been out these past three days with the last week events, and we've been taking lots of pictures, and we have some good valuable information for this project.
All right, are there any other questions? Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to accept the TDM subgrant?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consideration and possible action to grant a variance request with regards to the 401 lot ratio on the proposed BCS South India subdivision, American description of 10.0 acres of land comprised of the south five acres of Block 1 and the north five acres of Block 2, Brice Coleman subdivision survey 28, located on the east side of Brice Coleman Road, north of Tobar Road, the applicant is Juan Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. The applicant, or the developer is requesting a variance from the seat of Harlingen Code of Ordinance in Section 109-124B with regards to the lot length and width ratio in excess of a 401. The subject property is currently undeveloped, located outside the city limits but within our 3.5 mile ETJ. The proposed subdivision consists of two lots. The lots are 183 feet in width, in a proposed length of 1,190 feet, which gives it a ratio about 6.5 to 1. The surrounding land use consists of agriculture use. That is the location of the area. On all sides, with a few areas have single-family homes. The surrounding properties are unsubdivided, and the staff and PNC recommends approval for this variance. I can take any questions.
How, didn't we deny one of these a couple of meetings ago?
Yes, sir.
And how is this one different from that one?
Because the hardship here is that the property that surrounds this property has ownership from others that the developer cannot purchase to get that ratio, and in the other property, it was all within the same own. In fact, that subdivision came back and was approved because they went ahead and followed our recommendation to do four lots instead of five in that ratio.
I assume that the reason that you split it like that, instead of doing it into three lots with a long driveway going to them, is the cost of running the water?
And the driveway itself.
And the driveway itself?
Yes, sir.
Rodrigo? The other one had it, that's the one that had the flagship?
Right. That was one of the ideas, the other flag, and it had a big drain ditch in the back.
Right. Is the ultimate use for this to build a home?
Single-family, yes, sir.
So, we might as well ask the question?
Two lots, two homes.
Are we going to have problems with fire hydrants?
It was reviewed and, you know, recommended for approval by engineering and all the departments.
Okay. Well, I mean, it's the same thing we just did over on San Houston, that was in our ETJ.
Correct.
We made the guy put a fire hydrant on the other side. Now, I think they were going to put more than two homes, they were going to put.
Right, it was going to be more in the main water line that could provide the service to the fire hydrant was already in the ground, they just needed to attach to.
And so what's here, like a two-inch line or something?
Probably.
So there is city water?
East Ray Hondo.
It's from Hondo water.
East Hondo.
I'm asking questions so we just don't get bogged down with this twice.
Sure. I mean, we have to take it on as all case by case because they are in the ETJ. The type of home that they build, the permit that they get for the home will go through the county, not through the city.
Well, just, you know, we're doing this because it costs more money to do it the other way. To get these lots into conformity would require three lots and then that long driveway.
Correct. Or they could develop into multiple lots, but the developer in this case is the same owner who wants to build a house. In the other case, the developer is making the lots to sell for lots.
Either way?
Yes, sir.
We wind up, you know, granting this variance, and we wind up with this super-long piece of property that, you know, that the ordinance was designed to prevent.
Correct.
So at some point in the future, it's, you know, if we did let everybody do it, that wouldn't be good.
Wouldn't we deny them any options?
I don't know.
Well, and the other thing is, we don't have a, we don't have a layout of how the rest of those lots lie in there, so to the north and to the south, you know, you can assume because it looks like it's plowed a certain way?
Right.
That those are the links, but we can't make that assumption.
And we know that it's unsubdivided, it's all parcels, it's large tracks.
Correct. But the problem is, is that if we allow this one, then we conceivably have to allow many more because we're going to create that, that natural break in the back.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner, and through time, we have both precedents, right? It's been allowed before, either by this commission or other commissions, and then there's some that have been denied, like the one that was denied before, so.
I'm just pointing out that we do these things to save money because it's cheaper to do it this way. That's great because for the person that owns it, but at some point, in order to do things correctly, the cost of doing it correctly is the cost of doing it correctly, and if you can't afford that cost, then maybe you need to do a different lot or something else.
That's correct.
So may I ask, what's the alternative? If we deny it, then what options do they have, or what would they have to do?
They still, I mean, they, they on the track and they can just build one home in that track. Or, again, multiple homes, the county does not have so many requirements. What we're being asked to do is to approve the subdivision as they want to do it, to put two homes, but the permit, the building, that goes through the county.
But just help me understand that, you're modifying it for the developer. What, what would he have to do to do it as per ordinance on this track? Do three?
To meet the ratio, they're, I mean, they're at the design state, so he, they can do multiple things. The area is big enough that he could do more lots, which is going to incur more cost. Now he has to put improvements on the ground?
Right, but, so he's trying to avoid?
He's not, when he's, when the request came in from the applicant, he just wants to cut it into to have two homes as family members.
Yeah, but what's stopping him from trying to build after that?
Nothing, so we have to take him at their word. I can only take him at their word.
Is Mr. Garcia here? With Jane H?
Because staff didn't object, he's not here.
PNC approved it.
Yeah, PNC approved it. I'm just pointing out that if we just keep doing it over and over and over in the ETJ and granting the approval, then, you know, we've got all of these super-long skinny lots everywhere because now, as Commissioner Liao pointed out, the next guy is going to divide his the same way, the same length.
Correct. Okay, well, what are the wishes of the commission? What do y'all want?
PNC approved it, right, Rodrigo?
Yes, sir.
I would make the motion to turn it down, as presented.
It would require a four-fifth vote.
That's correct.
It'd be a four-fifth vote.
I'm not making a motion to, you have to vote hard, but I think.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the variance. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any, is there any discussion? All those in favor of denying the variance, the variance, say aye.
Aye.
And that, how many nays do we have?
Nays.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we approve it, as approved through the PNC.
All right, so we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the variance, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the variance is approved. But that, that's a good discussion, and, I don't know, on some of these, you know, even though everybody seems to be for it, if it looks like, you know, there could be a potential issue with it, you know, the proponent of this ought to be here, you know, to, so that you don't have to bear the entire brunt of the, you don't have to advocate for this. I mean, you can, you can explain why the staff agreed with, agreed with the, with the variance, but having the applicant here is good, to have him explain, they can advocate for it.
That's correct.
Might make a difference, might not.
We always encourage and invite the developer to come.
Okay, item, item 10, consideration of possible action to grant a variance request to parks the minimum street offset distance on our proposed Oak Trails at Waters Edge subdivision bearing a legal description of a replant of all lots 1 through 3, Block A, and lots 1 through 4, Block B, the center at Waters Edge subdivision located on the west side of N. Carey Drive, south of Park Bed.
Thank you, Mayor. The developer is requesting a variance in the city Harlingen Code of Ordinance Section 109-124C in regards to the minimum street jog of 125 feet. The minimum street jog is required to prevent through traffic and allow room to maneuver from one street to the other. A variance to the center line to center line distance between the streets is requested to 81 and a half feet. The owner's reason for the variance is to avoid placing a curve connection to the north and south proposed roadways. There would be a reduction in lot sizes that he and the HOA have agreed to, and perhaps even a loss of one or two lots. The irregular-shaped property is currently subdivided but undeveloped with seven commercial lots. It is located inside the city limits. The developer is proposing to re-subdivide the property into 30-lot residential subdivision. The proposed subdivision is to, is on hold right now pending approval of this variance. A transportation impact analysis was submitted to the engineering department and was reviewed by the engineering department and fire prevention, who reported no objection.
Are all of those lots shown in the same subdivision? Or are there two subdivisions?
They're the same ones, so this would be the entrance coming in.
Right, and then the ones that are not shaded dark on the left, that's another subdivision?
That was another phase of the subdivision, clearly approved, and there's already.
Right, so it's already?
Developed.
It's already done?
Yes, sir.
So there's no way that it would ever line up?
Correct. The other lots would be this ones right here, that they're already developed. This was intended to be commercial, but it just never got out.
I know, I know initially there was like 11 phases. How many phases do they have right now?
Right now, they're just asking for, oh, throughout? I think that's the last one, so unless, unless they have some over here.
Okay. So they want to narrow the street, you said, to eighty-one feet?
No, no, sir.
I didn't hear you.
The ordinance requires that when you have streets coming into one street, that between this center line of this cul-de-sac and this center line have a minimum of 125 feet in between them to allow for maneuvering. They're requesting a variance to that, lower that number from 125 to 81 and a half.
They're close, but they're just, they're two-thirds of the way there.
They did provide several options, which are in the packet, that they tried it like three different ways to try and accommodate, but it would, it would make irregular lots. There is an existing drainage pipe in here that if this, if they, if they put them straight up, then some of the lots would be like really long and the other would be really small.
And so the 81 and a half foot, that's okay for emergency vehicles traveling at emergency speeds?
Right, the fire department didn't say that, that they had no objections. And the engineering department requested a traffic analysis, and once they studied that, they also, they didn't have objections.
Are they going to be able to park on that street? Would it be narrow?
No, sir.
It's not being narrowed?
Rodrigo? We're not talking about narrowing.
No. So, so there's a jog, right?
There we go.
So all, they're supposed to be 125 feet apart. They can't get there because it makes, it would make irregular lots. So all they're doing is asking, can we make it 81?
And a half.
And a half feet, instead of 125. That's all they're doing.
And everybody agrees that if you're going to go from the south side to the north side as the orientation is there, you're going to go straight, jog over a little bit to the right, then back over to the left to go in, and vice versa coming down. In other words, this street here is not going to be directly lined up with that. They're going to be going from a narrower street to a wider street.
Only, only in the event that one of these drivers would want to go into this.
Correct, but I'm saying, but based on that scale there, the actual main street coming in is wider.
It's the same.
Right.
And they're both dead ends.
Correct.
They're both dead ends, right.
The fire department didn't have any issue with it. Make that, please.
There's no way out.
So you won't have too many traffic?
Right.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the variance?
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like so, like, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to rezon from residential multifamily M2 district to residential single-family for Block 2 of a re-subdivision of Lakeview Edition, saving except a .73 acre tract land of Lot 2, Lakeview Edition, lots 1 and 2 in the south one-half of Canal right-of-way lying adjacent to Lot 1, Lake Cove Edition, lots 3 through 7, the alley right-of-way adjacent to lots 4 through 7 in the south one-half of Canal right-of-way adjacent to North Lot 7, Lake Cove Edition, and 083, .083 acres, a 20-foot-wide alley right-of-way of Crossing Lake Edition, generally located on the north side of Washington Avenue, east of North 3rd Street, African Free Powers.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting to rezon the subject properties from residential multifamily district to residential single-family district to preserve and maintain the existing single-family residence, resident, ah, residential use, excuse me. There is an existing single-family residential structure on the same, on some of the lots, and the remaining lots are currently undeveloped. The surrounding properties are shown residential, single-family to the north and east, general retail to the south, and residential multifamily to the west. The Harlingen Lake is located to the south of the subject property. PNC recommends, and staff recommend approval for this request.
Okay, anybody have any questions before I open the public hearing? All right, the public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? For or against the rezoning? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is the consideration of possible action, approve ordinance on first reading for a rezon request from residential multifamily M2 district to residential single-family for Block 2 of a re-subdivision of Lakeview Edition, but develop described properties and ask, City Attorney, read the caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential multifamily M2 district to residential single-family R1 district. multifamily M2 district to residential single family R1 district for block two of a rezubdivision of Lakeview Edition, saving except a point seven eight three acre tract out of, tract of land out of lot two, Lake Edition, lots one and two in the south one half of Canal right of way lying along adjacent to lot one, Lake Cove Edition, lots three to seven, the alley right of way adjacent to lots four to seven, and the south one half of Canal right of way adjacent to the north line of lot seven, Lake Cove Edition, and point zero eight three acres out of the twenty-foot wide alley right of way of Crossing Lake Edition, located on the north side of Washington Avenue, east of North Third Street, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item twelve, the public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow an adult business smoke shop in a general retail GR district located at twenty-two, twenty-two South Expressway, eighty-three, suite five oh five, bearing a legal description of one point three four acres out of lot AN dash one, block twenty-four, lot C Hill subdivision.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a smoke shop on the existing two hundred square foot suite five oh five. The proposed days and hours of operation will be Monday through Sunday from ten a.m. to eight p.m. There are, two parking spaces are required for the establishment, and fifty-six parking spaces are provided in the common parking area of the commercial plaza. This is a layout, we're going to have some storage in the suite and some shelves to display some of the items that they're going to be selling. The surrounding properties are shown, general retail in all directions. The specific use permits request was routed to the building inspections, health, fire prevention, and police for review. All departments reported no objection to the request, subject to applying for all applicable permits and compliance with all city ordinances. The police department also reported no objection, subject to the applicant providing a video surveillance with at least thirty day retention and with the condition of a six-month inspection for compliance with the ordinance. PNC and staff recommends approval.
All right. Is there, anybody have any questions on this? City Attorney, read your caption.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen...
I'm sorry, there's a public hearing, so...
Always on that.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the, the public hearing and now ask the...
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit to allow an adult business smoke shop in a general retail district located at twenty-two, twenty-two South Expressway, eighty-three, suite five oh five, bearing a legal description of one point three four acres out of lot AN dash one, block twenty-four, lot C Hill subdivision, subject to complying with the following. One, retain and maintain the proper state permits. Two, maintain the required parking in accordance with city regulations. Three, comply with the Code of Ordinances, chapter thirty-four, article six, section thirty-four dash one four two, unlawful substances. Four, comply with Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-two, article three, sections twenty-two through fifty-four to twenty-two through sixty-six, smoking regulations. Five, provide video surveillance with at least thirty day retention of the video. Six, an inspection of the establishment at six months to ensure compliance with ordinance. And seven, comply with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning, building inspections, environmental health, fire prevention, and police departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregone.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, the motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration of possible action to approve a revised agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen Park's team regarding the use of Pendleton and Victor Pool to authorize the city manager to sign the revised agreement. Javier?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Back in November of two thousand seventeen, staff was directed to evaluate the program of HAT at Pendleton. And for the last six months, what we've been doing with our staff is we've been gathering information on databases, how many participants they've had in the program. And so what we've, what we've noticed is that on Wednesdays and Fridays, their numbers are low. And so what we did was, we met with Mr. Tucker, and we presented these numbers to the park advisory board. And so the recommendation to the city commission is that we retain two lanes, lanes one and two, on Wednesdays and Fridays for the general public for lap swimming. And so we met with Ms. Tucker, we went over the agreement. And now the language that we, that we included in the agreement is that in the event that we do not use the two lanes, that Mr. Tucker would have access to those if we did not have any participants showing up that day on Wednesdays and Fridays to use the lanes.
Javier, I guess, Mayor, if I can, I noticed that in your executive summary, I hadn't noticed before, but it says Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. It's just Wednesdays and Fridays?
Yes, sir. It's just Wednesdays and Fridays.
I want to verify that because I think that's in the contract with Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays also.
Yeah, and we, and we changed that. We, actually, the language that, that was drafted by the attorney, we didn't address that. We just said we were going to use lanes one and two. And so when Mr. Tucker and I talked about it, he brought that to my attention, that we needed to include that.
So it's only on Wednesdays and Fridays?
Yes, sir.
Two lanes?
Two lanes.
And only if, if someone, if the public is there to utilize it, if not, he has access to it?
Correct. And this would be generally between five and seven p.m.?
Okay. Is that, we're in agreement on this? It's an agreement, right?
No, you're all asked to speak.
I'm at, yeah, I'm at, it's a, this is an agreement with your organization, so I wanted to know if we're in agreement on that.
Our preference, Steve, from here, do you want to comment?
I'm not sure I heard you other than I, I think I heard you say not my preference.
No.
Huh?
No. My, our preference is, and we spoke to this at the Parks Migration Board meeting...
I can't hear you, can you?
Our, our preference is to have five to seven, Monday through Friday, uninterrupted. We've had that some years ago, and things changed with the school districts management, and then it fell to what it is now. So our preference is really not this, if that's what you're asking me.
But that's a, the compromise sort of...
The compromise is, yeah, Javier and I have talked about it, and we're trying, we're trying to...
I'm just asking everybody if that's a compromise, if that's the compromise that you...
I'd rather not. In answer to your question, I'd rather not do that, but if, if that's the compromise that, that we need to do, I understand, let me just backtrack a little bit. I know I get long-winded, and I'll try not to do that. Every summer, the programs are in three pools, and at the end of the summer, all those programs funnel into one pool. And that's the issue, is, is not so much not sharing the pool. I mean, I don't mind, that's, it's, that's all good. But the issue is facility availability. We have three pools that are operating full tilt in the summertime, and it all funnels into Pendleton Park Pool when school starts. And Javier doesn't have enough room for all the programs that the city offers, which are all great programs. And, but consequently, we are the, probably the only program that's involved in contractual basis for the city facilities, so we're the ones that get dinked. And, and so I'm never, I've, I've spent twenty-two years coaching this team in manipulating the contracts and trying to get the best possible hours and times for our kids to be competitive outside the valley. And so anytime I have a, something that takes away from that, it limits the, the pursuit of excellence and the competitiveness of our kids outside the valley. So it's not that I oppose it, it's just I'd rather not because it's, it takes away from the potential of our program to grow. And that's what I'm trying to do all the time. So that's my job as coach, so I don't know if I answered your question or not.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for answering the question. What are the wishes of the commission?
I like the motion of approval. As stated, what they compromised with, because it didn't go to the board, and that's what staff's recommending. The staff did a very lengthy evaluation of the actual usage of the pool, her lane and whatnot, and again, it's not going to affect them if, if there's going to be there.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Come, come forward and state your name and tell us who you are.
Sorry, I didn't know if that was our time to talk or not. Hi, I'm Cindy Mendosa. This is my son, who is actually a participant on Coach Tucker's team. So I want you all to understand, our program at one point was from five to seven, five days a week, right? So as your, as the city has grown and has gotten into other activities within the pool, our team has compromised. We've already given up thirty minutes Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. You're asking us to compromise once again and give up two lanes. Okay? We, we would like you to consider looking at other programs to compromise and give in as well. One of the other programs I know is well-known in the city is the adult water aerobics class. We compromise time for them, right? So they're at the same time slotted as us, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So you've already taken thirty minutes of our time, so why can't they give up space for the public? Not only that, since I know since we've been there majority of the time, you don't have a lot of public adult participants in your lanes. So I want you to consider you're taking away from our kids who are trying to be competitive outside of the valley, in the valley. My son was real fortunate to actually go to Houston in two thousand sixteen and Detroit last year in the Junior Olympics. And honestly, outside of the valley, it's very hard to get anywhere in the ranks in one of these competitions because they need more time. They already don't have the space, and they already don't have the time, and you're asking them to give up more. So consider that you are taking away from children who it's not beneficial for them to be out there later. We're asking you to consider maybe moving one of the programs to a later time. It's thirty minutes. It's thirty minutes, that's all we're asking. And as opposed to giving up two lanes where you're crowding most of our kids into less lanes, and truly you can't get a true practice in there when you're crapping five, six kids in one lane. You're, you're getting half the time, the practice time that they need to be competitive.
Javier, when, when we did the study on the utilization of the pool by HAT, did we also track who else was using the pool?
No.
I mean, but the other times, I mean, what I'm getting at is can we continue to track this like we have been so we know over the next time period how many people are using those two lanes?
We could, and since, since we didn't offer it, or we didn't open it up to the public, of course, we couldn't engage them.
Hold on, now, let me stop right there. Let me clarify something. Because my kids went to the, they, they participated in the learn to swim program the last couple of weeks. The city itself is giving up lanes for the public. They had thirty-plus kids in the pool, okay? And, and so, and there was people using it. There were several people using that pool. Now, what I don't want is for misinformation, okay? They did a very long study of the actual usage for the last six months for your program, and you're not using them. So the, 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 the object is to give it to the public is if it's needed, okay? Now, Mr. Tucker stated in the previous meeting that the school district never got back with him, that he tried to work something out, and that was not true, okay? The school district itself has a, a CO program that's very similar to HAT program. They have over ninety kids, okay? And, and USA Swimming, it's a whole, it's the same thing, and they're all being competitive. It's not about trying to take from the kids, it's trying to be fair with the entire building, okay, for, for, that it can be used. And again, if nobody shows up, then y'all get to use the pool. But at the same time, it, it, it's not a bargaining point. At the same time, we asked for actual numbers, and, and Javier did a very good job of, at some point, there was only like four kids in the pool, correct? Right? So we can't tie up that whole pool if there's no, not even in your program being used, utilizing. And those are actual numbers. Those are numbers, they get it by hour, by lane, and if you go to Brownsville or any other pool, it's a hundred dollars per lane, okay? That's what they charge, because it's very expensive. And we're never going to make money, we're never, that's not the intent of doing it. It's what, being fair with all our community, not just one program.
Can I speak to that? We're not saying not to give two lanes to, to the public, we're saying to look at additional programs that have not sacrificed anything to give additional lanes to the public. We've, every time, we've already, we've already given up thirty minutes to accommodate another program. So my question is, what are other programs doing to accommodate the public? Why is it a hundred percent...
You only have to give it up if somebody shows up.
I'm sorry?
So you're not being asked only if, if, if there is a need and, and Javier will track it, and if we, the next time it comes up, if it's not being used, then we go to the other one. But right now, we're being asked to, to, for people to do laps swimming, and they can do it, okay? And five to seven is a prime time. So we have a motion in the second, Mayor.
Oh, Javier, this contract goes until?
It's a year. June, June of next, next year.
I thought, I thought this was a six month, and we're going to give the other six months because they asked for a year, and we, what we did is we pulled out...
We gave them six months.
We're going to give them six months, and we would look at it in six months. So my recommendation is, let's get through the summer, let's look at September, January, I mean, September, October, November, and, and we, I, I agree, I mean, I'm looking at the numbers here, and on Monday, their, their average number in ten days is fifty-three, on Tuesday it's forty-three. On Wednesday it drops to twenty, then on Thursday it goes to thirty, basically twenty-nine point three. Then on Friday, there's twelve people, and then nobody shows up on Saturday, per the contract.
Correct.
And, and so I kind of agree, you know, we, we have a limited amount of pool space during the winter because that's one pool disservice the entire community. And, and I can agree with you. I mean, if we have people that aren't utilizing it, yes, we should look at the whole program, granted. But right now, when I look at these numbers and I listen to how many people a lane can support, twelve people on a Friday, you don't need all those lanes. Twenty people on a Wednesday, you don't need all those lanes. But the lanes are going to be available if nobody shows up. But I agree with you. I think this next six months, maybe when we ought to start looking at it. Right now, it's not tariffed because the pools are packed, summer's in session.
Well, we're not actually at Pendleton Pool right now, we actually switched to Victor Pool to accommodate other things in the summer. So we actually do six-thirty to nine at Victor Pool in summer.
Right, 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 right. And I, I live right by Victor Pool, and I notice the pool is being utilized. And, and so, you know, every time I pass by there, I tell my wife, I say, see, our parks are being utilized, this is really great. And so, but I do agree with what you're saying, but at the same point, you know, we asked for this data, the data was compiled, it came through every month, and I kept noticing the same thing over and over, and said, how is, how, how, how can we justify this if the numbers are this? But you're correct, we should be tracking all the programs out there. I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny that.
Could you let us know, how, how did you track those numbers? Because you have kids coming in from five to seven. You don't have all of them show up at five. You don't have, I mean, because, I mean, most of our kids have working parents, so they're not there right at five. So, so when are you actually taking the toll of kids?
We appreciate your input on this, we really do, and we have a motion.
Second.
Okay.
And a second.
And a second.
So is there any, any other discussion?
Is that motion a second for, for a twelve-month contract or for the remainder of the existing twelve months?
Twelve months. Twelve months. Do you want to modify it to the six month and, and, and track the other quarter? Well, I'm okay with that.
I, I think it's kind of weird to have... I, I think it's kind of weird to have, jump it from our normal, we only review most, you know, we reviewed it for so many years, the same point, time of the year.
So then, so we're ready to get into?
Okay. You want?
In October.
I'm not sure, that's why I asked what the, the original contract should have ended when?
My motion is. July one through December thirty-one.
July one through December thirty-one.
The next six months.
Correct.
Because we, we deferred it for six months. And so now, Commissioner Laos was suggesting we, let's look at it, let's do it for six months, and look at it again in six months.
Right, that we're going to, we're going to hope out the likes of the public, and then that's also going to give.
Yeah, yeah, we'll see how this. So we'll see how this works, we'll see how this works for six months.
Right. I don't want to penalize them.
No, that's fair.
For, for twelve months, if, if there really is an issue.
The numbers are the numbers, that is.
Okay. She'll accept amendment, amendment to your motion.
Yes, sir.
To six months, and second, whoever made the second.
I made it for twelve months. I made it for twelve months.
Right, will you accept the amendment?
For six months.
We do for six months.
For six months, for six months.
It's a compromise, I mean, you're, I mean, it's data, I mean.
Okay. Motion, accepts the second, we have a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, thank you very much. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action to approve a license to encroach partially into the public right-of-way that's located at, adjacent to lots four and five, block sixty, original town site in the city of Harlingen, also known as one oh six South A Street.
Mayor Commission, during the closing for the nine-story building downtown, we identified some encroachments into the city right-of-way, some having to do with the building foundation, some having to do with the stairwell going down into the basement, some having to do with the utility connections in the alley, and the escape ladder in the alley. These have existed since the building was constructed. The lender is asking for a irrevocable license to encroach for seventeen years. We had our legal department review it, they are fine with it. We also had our outside real estate council review it, they are also fine with it, and staff has recommended approval, and this is the last piece they need to close with the lender.
This is, we're just basically grandfathering.
It, it's been there the entire time.
Since whatever, twenty-nine or thirty or something.
It qualifies for a long time.
Okay, is there a motion to, is there a motion to approve the license?
So moved.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Good job, Julio.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Item fifteen, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending ordinance number twenty thirteen dash twelve of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-two, health article for food, food establishments, section twenty-two dash one twenty-eight, to allow certified nonprofit or other public interest organizations up to six temporary ordinance per year.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Josh Jimenez, Department Health Director. This item before you has had a request of, we have received throughout the years, a request from other nonprofits to increase the food event sales they have throughout the year. So this item is just to allow them to increase those from four to six.
This is your typical barbecue chicken?
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay.
This will qualify five oh one C threes, and some five oh one C fours as well.
Just nonprofits, right?
Nonprofits only, yes.
Can we have the city attorney read the caption?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty thirteen dash twelve, amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty-two, health, article four, food, and food establishments, section twenty-two dash one twenty-eight, C, to allow certified nonprofit or other public interest organizations up to six temporary food permits per year, following verification of such status.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, board appointments. Board appointments.
I have one, and I'd like to appoint Anna Viegas to the Harlingen Proud Board.
I have two. Oregio Torres to reappointment to the Parks and Recreation and to the Library, Tracy Montalves, reappointment.
I have one to the Convention and Business Bureau Board, Rex Warren.
What was the name?
Rex Warren.
I'm giving you his application in my sheet with his name, the address on. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seventeen, executive closed session on the following items, pursuant to section five fifty-one, one oh seven one, Texas Government Code to consult with the city attorney in connection to the MPO merger, MB, pursuant to section five fifty-one, one oh seven one, Texas Government Code to consult with the city attorney regarding fire protection. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going into executive session now, to consult with our attorney. When we come back, there, there are no other action items on the agenda. Okay, we're out of executive session at six fifty-two. And the next item on the agenda is citizen communication, item eighteen.
Okay, Mayor, I don't know if they're still here, but let's see, Sander?
That was my wife, she's on this call.
Oh, okay.
I'm the second on the list, yeah.
You're on the second one, from this?
Yes.
Okay, and your name is?
Hermes Mendoza.
Who?
Hermes Mendoza.
Harmon Mendoza.
I had a lot of points to make, but my wife is pretty good at this, so she, she made a lot of them. I just had a couple concerns regarding some of the things.
Would you mind just telling us your name and where you live?
Oh, my name is Hermes Mendoza Sabala. I'm a, I'm a psychiatry instructor, I live in twenty-eight seventeen North Lake in Harlingen, Texas. Seventy-five zero. So my wife said most of the things that I would probably say. One of the things I would like to mention that I'm very concerned about is, I think we need to better define how we're tracking the students, the kids that are going to swimming. Are they being checked at the beginning of class, at the end of the class, in the middle, or being checked throughout? I think there's a little bit of lack of transparency there. That's very, very concerning to me. So one thing that I told my wife is that we need to start doing maybe a lock-in for the kids, even though that'll take time away from them. But when is it being done, is my question. Another concern that I had is we took the time to attend the other commission meeting with the Parks and Recreation Department, what is in this contract, and I'll, again, I don't know what happens if you go to them, everybody else, and I'm not part of the, of the city or anything, but that's not what we talked about, that was not always agreed at all. That was not what they said the recommendation would be. It's very opposite of that. That's concerning to me. And, and somebody, I think Mr. Uribe made the comment about the CO team being available. Some of our kids do not go to the public school system for whatever reason, and so that makes it hard for our kids to join the CO team. Actually, I don't think it's possible. So we have to keep that in mind, I think, that not all of us send our kids, I'm sure some of you don't, send our kids to the public school system. Not that I have any against it, but, but some of us are looking for different things. And so we need to consider that, that not everyone can go to the CO team. But I think there's, there's, my main concern was, there's a little bit of lack of transparency here about how we're tracking this, and I think we need to set parameters how we're tracking this, is maybe check it in the beginning, middle, end of the class. The, the, there's enough staff to do that, they're at the, at the pool. And I think if only we do it, then it's going to be like, well, that's the numbers they want to see, right? And, and vice versa, you know, then we're not, we're not going to get, you know.
We have a two-minute time limit in.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. That was my main thing, is that, is that I feel like we're being transparent here.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. That's it? All right, and ladies and gentlemen, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.